Okay, Brian. Call of beans order? Certified compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hayden.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Here.
Councilmember Riesler.
Here.
Councilmember Weisbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Weisappel is out.
Next we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move second.
We have a motion in second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Public comments? Are there any public comments? If you would like to address the council on an agenda item or any other item, this is your opportunity. Please identify yourself for the record. Hearing none. You don't have any scheduled appearances. We move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes for the regular city council meeting from August 23rd, 2023. Productor's license for Nicole R. Morris for the spot fire. Everything is fine. Somebody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no? No. Councilmember Hooker feels obscenizing. Next, we're going to have a public hearing. The public hearing for a combination Class A liquor and fermented malt beverage license for the, what do we call that? The Dolgin Corp?
Dolgin.
Dolgin Corp, LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store Number 24743, Agent Quinn Fuentes at 1106 East Prospect Street. I hereby declare the public hearing open for this fermented malt beverage and liquor license. Again, if anybody would like to speak concerning it, this is your opportunity. Please identify yourself for the record. With the council, of course, we'll have our discussion later. But again, this is the opportunity for anybody in the public to speak concerning this combination Class A liquor and fermented malt beverage license application. Hearing, nobody wishing to speak. I hereby declare the public hearing closed. Next, to move on to the business agenda, the mayor's report, just a few things. Going to talk about, as we know, councilmember Weisappel is missing. Know that recently he had some health, but he's doing better. Just decided not to come tonight. We had sent some, on behalf of the, he sent a nice thank you to everybody. But again, we're looking forward for councilmember Weisappel to be back in his chair soon. So again, we're hoping to see him back again soon. Also, just a reminder, prior to this meeting, we did meet with the swim club to talk a little bit about, they wanted to talk a little bit about the donors and about exactly how we're going to honor them. And I'd like to thank councilmembers Hooker and Riesler for sitting in on that along with the staff. And we, they had some ideas about what they wanted to do. Just also reminded them, of course, we're down about two weeks from now we'll get bids in. And then we've got, we start about a two-month period, even though there's technically sort of three months in there, but still, about a two-month period to get everything together as far as donors, everything in shape. And we'll see where our numbers are, and we'll go from there. And as we said, we'll be seeing that. But again, a good meeting. We've had a couple of good meetings with them in a row on a number of subjects as we're moving forward. That's all I got. Any questions? Next? Nothing came off consent. So we'll go on to administrator's report. Administrator Rasmussen?
I have a lot here. There are just a couple of updates on our budget meeting that we talked about last time, and there are going to be just a couple of changes. One of them is for those, councilmember Riesler and Mayor Miller are moving our public works meeting, which was scheduled for the second.
Fourth.
Fourth, I'm sorry. The Wednesday, the fourth. We're going to move it to Monday, October 9th. So that would be Travis, and that would work for you. And then we'll check with member Weisappel as well for public works, and hopefully that will work out.
And I appreciate that I'm going to be out of town on the floor, so hopefully it works out to meet on the 9th instead.
And then I messed up the date for the finance meeting that basically predates our public hearing on November 15th. That was scheduled to be, I believe, on the 25th, right? Geez, eh? And the timing of that just doesn't work out. So I can't get the thing in the paper quite quick enough to make that work. So that one, we're going to like to shoot for the Monday, the 23rd. It's a little bit odd because we're all, a number of us are coming back from the municipal municipalities conference that previous week. But in order to get it in the paper by noon on the 24th, so it's published by Thursday, the 26th, that's really not our only option. So hopefully that works out for the folks on the finance committee, obviously, the chair of that, member Hayden, Mr. Riesler, Nick, and then the mayor.
What time we starting?
We can start whenever. Yeah, it's early or late as you need. Meeting on some Monday night, we can make that work for whatever you need. We're not bumped up against anything, so. So I guess we're probably thinking closer five, somewhere in there, if that works for those of you that are working till then. I'm just checking.
I want to let the calendar look good.
Yeah, but just double check, please, and let me know so we can get that one scheduled.
Can we go 5:00 or even if it's 4:30, if it's possible? You want to?
Yeah, whatever works for you guys will make it work.
When's public safety?
I'm sorry, JB. Let me have an update on those. So public safety is scheduled for Wednesday, the 11th, before the council meeting. So I would assume that that's going to be probably at 5:00. We also did talk about the potentiality, and Stan and I have still have to work through this. If there is more discussion of the potentiality of adding another officer, we're going to have, tentative, we have the 27th slated for that discussion Wednesday, September 27th for that, right before the council meeting as well. But that's a little bit tentative. But the scheduled committee to talk about budget for ambulance, police, and fire is the 11th. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Any questions for the city administrator? Next, we have discussion possible action regarding Class A liquor and fermented malt beverage license for the Dolan Corp, LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store Number 24743, Agent Quinn Fuentes at 1106 East Prospect Street. If you want to talk just a little bit about what type of license it is and what we have available and so on and so forth in the city, if, I don't know, the clerk or, let me sort of explain.
It's a Class A license, so it's the same as like Ryan's Sport Shop. So there's no limits on a Class A's liquor and fermented malt beverage. Plenty of those available.
So any discussion concerning this? Chief, have any issue with it? Nope. And so they're also under the same rules. I mean, they're going to have to, the people that work there are all going to have to get in out.
Anyone that sells alcohol, they have to have a operator's license or bartender's license.
They have self-checkout. You can't take alcohol through the self-checkout, I assume.
It's for a clerk to come and verify the age.
You have to, yeah, I'll ask to go through a clerk. I'm assuming Quintrip has to do the same. They've got a self-checkout spot there.
Yep.
And they got to do the same thing. So if you went to the self-checkout, tried to do alcohol, it wouldn't let you, I would assume.
Won't let you complete.
It's programmed that way, thank you. Okay, any other questions concerning this? If not, would somebody like to make a motion regarding the application?
I'll make a motion to approve Class A liquor and fermented malt beverage license for the Dolgin Corp, LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. It's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's agreed to. Next, we have discussion possible action regarding resolution 2306, a resolution authorizing applying for the urban forestry grant. As you know, this is something, we got this past year, and this is, we need to apply again. I don't know if you want to speak to it or Matt wants to speak to it.
I can certainly start. So as the mayor noted, and just recall, so last year, we received one of their startup grants, so we were limited to $5,000, a $5,000 grant. Obviously, we used it to address some of our boulevard ash tree issues. Fair to say, after some maybe a little bit of angst up front, I think that program worked out very well. All those trees were taken down, and I think the homeowners are pretty happy about it. So since then as well, what the other piece that we've, the DNR had helped us with was basically got us in touch with one of a group that they work with regarding tree inventories. So we've also had an inventory done of, and Matt was at, that's just exclusively boulevard trees and city-owned trees, correct?
Yeah, boulevard and city park, open areas.
Yeah. So we still have at least 50-plus ash trees on the boulevards to take care of, correct?
Correct.
So again, we thought we would start with round two of, or take another crack at this grant. This time, it's not a startup grant. Frankly, they just about guaranteed us last year that with the startup, there were so few people applying for that, that we were just about guaranteed, and obviously, we got it. No guarantees on this, but still a pretty good shot. We're going to up it to $10,000. We're not limited, so we can address a few more of our tree issues, whether, again, they're boulevard and related or in our parks. So that's the plan to go forward. In talking with Abby from the DNR, we do have to do another resolution every year. So basically, it's the exact same resolution as last year, just saying that we'll comply with their guidelines and use the grant to the best of our ability, so.
And how many total trees got taken out this past year?
There will, we still got to cut the ones down in the park yet. We were waiting till October to do that, but there will be roughly around 19 of them that got cut down, 19, 20 that got cut down this year.
And of the 50-some that are left, how many of them are on private property boulevards, you know, private residence?
We have roughly around 20 in our parks, between our two parks and our cemetery.
So you're saying there's another 30 trees approximately that are still on private residence as far as where they're located?
Yes, boulevards, yes.
Are any of those on, like, the school or the?
Yes. Schools contacted me about taking theirs down already. I don't know exactly when, but I bet it was contacted, if, when, if and when they cut them down, if they had to take care of them any special way. So they're looking at cutting theirs down.
On their own?
Yeah. They didn't ask me to go on any grant.
But they could apply for it just like.
So it's not, you couldn't ask for more than 10?
We could, yeah. Yeah. It's fair to say that the more you ask for, and they don't, at least my understanding is, if you ask for 20, they don't, well, we can only give you 10. If it doesn't, if it's all or nothing type thing. So the plan was, with the tack that we're on and the likelihood of making sure that we get it before we go to the $10,000.
And then we have to.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. So that's, yeah, this is, yeah. So it's basically, it's a total $20,000 project.
Any other questions concerning the resolution? Hearing none. Would somebody like to offer it, please?
I'll offer resolution 2306.
Is there a motion concerning this resolution?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2306.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So resolution 2306, a resolution authorizing applying for the urban forestry grant. It's on the table for any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisappel. Weisbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
All five in favor.
At least we have one of those.
Yes.
Next, move on to public safety. Chief Ridgway?
I just have a couple of things here. We're in the middle of homecoming week, so on Friday afternoon, we'll have the homecoming parade at 2:30 between having some part-timers come in and some additional staff. One of Matt's employees is going to be around, and then the sheriff's department's going to help us as well block out the intersections. The parade will be at 2:30 on Friday afternoon. Homecoming dance will be Saturday night, so there won't be a dance right after the football game. They wait until Saturday for that. So that's what's going on with homecoming week. Trunk or treat, I will have that on the agenda for next meeting. Digg and the Duran Police Department are again sponsoring the trunk or treat event. It's going to be Saturday, October 28th, from 3:00 to 5:00. So I'll bring that to you guys for the street closure permit again. Part-time staff, I just wanted to give an update. I had the one candidate that I had met during National for the Arts. I sent him to a drug screen and physical as I'm getting ready to wrap everything up and call him in to work his first couple shifts. He got an interview at Blumer Police Department. Three, four days later, they offered him a full-time job. So wasted money spending him through drug screen and physical and time, and he never worked a shift for us, so. So that's an update on our part-time staff. I do have somebody doing a ride-along tonight that we may sponsor through the academy. That's been our best avenue to get part-timers because then we make them commit to us for a little while at least. And the avenue of hiring people fresh out of the academy, the very few that they have available, just this doesn't work because they get full-time jobs immediately before we even sometimes get them off training or have them even start. So I think we're going to keep pursuing the academy route, you know, spend a lot of time on that, but at least we get a little time out of it. It's working out right now with Logan Tulo. He, you know, thankfully, we have him to fill some shifts, and so that's kind of the route we're going to stick to right now. And I have somebody lined up for the next academy class, so I'm excited about at least getting him on board. That's all I have, other than the next item.
Any questions for the chief? Matt, we'll have the update on the therapy dog program?
Yeah, so everything is going really well with the therapy dog program. We, our budget was $5,000. We're going to kind of rework the budget. I spoke to Matt a little bit about what the county does with their canine handler as far as the 15 minutes a day that you have to pay a handware. So they do some flexible scheduling stuff. It wouldn't work with us during the school year as well, but during the summer months, we're going to do some flexible scheduling. So that $5,000 isn't going to be as much because we're going to do some flexible scheduling with Brandon during the summer months. We got all of the dog food donated through Purina. Still, we're working on vet care. We've done a great job getting letters out to the community. We've gotten a great response from the community. We've got a donation from the school district, and they committed $1,500 initially and then $500 a year throughout the program. So we have an ongoing commitment from them. We had Lions Club, they gave us a donation with the understanding also that they want us to come back every year and ask for a donation. So we've got a little bit of a commitment there from the Lions Club. So we are, right now, have the program funded just about all of 2025. Well, obviously, the rest of 2023, 2024, and most of 2025 is funded for the program. We're working with Blueberry Cottage Kennels. They have a litter that is going to be available in November, that they have a pup for us to take. So I wanted to make sure I updated you guys on the program. Like I said, we're fully funded in 2024, and we have some fundraising events planned. Before COVID, we had planned a fundraising basketball game with law enforcement, fire, EMS. So we're looking at bringing that back this summer now because it got canceled due to COVID, so we're hoping to bring that event back. And then we're going to do some other fundraising events as well. We're going to do a meat raffle. A Duran Brewery approached us about doing a meat raffle out there at their facility, so we're going to do that. So we got some fundraising options, and we shouldn't have a problem funding this program throughout the life of the therapy dog. So with that, I just wanted to give you guys an update and make sure there weren't any objections with us continuing to move forward with the program. If we get the dog in November, like I said, it's a year, so it wouldn't be put in service until November of next year. One other thing, Embark, Embark out of Eau Claire has donated the training, except for the very last training, which is a kind of a federally certified training where they fly an instructor in, so she doesn't have the option to donate that. But she donated all of the puppy classes and things like that. So we got a huge donation from them as far as not having to pay for a lot of the training for the dog. So we've, yeah, we've had amazing support for the program, so.
And nobody, a big donation for the naming rights?
We had one, $13,000 donation, and I spoke to him, and he said, you guys should name the dog. So he didn't want to name it, but obviously, we had said, you know, if we get multiple $3,000 donations, we would take names and then decide for a name from there. So that's still open. If we had any other donors that wanted to do $3,000, we would definitely consider naming rights as well, so. But yeah, we've had some great support for the program. I don't know if I told you this at one of our prior meetings, but our very first donation was a $50 donation. They stopped at City Hall, and they heard about our program, and they were from between Independence and Whitehall, and they drove all the way to Duran to give us a $50 donation. That was our first donation we got for the program. Somebody who just heard about it, thought it was a great idea, drove to Duran and donated to the program, so.
Any, anything else? Any other questions?
Any questions?
On the program? Again, that sounds great. Obviously, the community's supporting. Like, they do a lot of things, and I think it's going to be a great addition to our available services that we offer, so. Okay? Thank you. Next, we move on to the fire department. Chief King?
So you got the July and August report. On July, we had 12 calls. They're all listed there. And for August, we're down to six calls. They're all listed. A couple of updates I have is the new brush truck should be done the end of this week with the lighting. We're still waiting here from the DNR on the pump side of the unit. We should know that in about a month if we get the grant for that. The ladder truck, print approval, the drawing is due October 11th. So we actually got a meeting here tonight to finalize a couple of things. And then October 11th, we have to sign off on the truck, and that's what is going to get built and ordered. And then they did give us a new update for the delivery date from April that got pushed to June. So production is still getting backed up because of supply, supply issues. So that's about all I have for updates.
Any questions for the fire department? None? For ambulance, Director Bagel?
For August, we had 30 calls. 27 of those calls were made. Zero 911 calls were missed, and three transfers were also missed, and it's listed where the transfers were coming from and going to. Our new EMR is Stan Ridgway from Duran here. We just interviewed a new EMT as well, just waiting on the background check. And CVTC is hosting the EMT 1 course, which will end October 19th. And that's all I really have.
How many people did we get for the course or enlisted or enrolled?
That may be joining our service, maybe one.
Okay. But even in total, how many are in the?
Seven, I believe, she said.
That's good.
Any questions for ambulance? Thank you. Next, move on to public works utilities. Engineers report, Russ?
Yes, good evening. A few quick project updates. 12th Avenue East, project adjacent to the Dollar Tree store. Basically, the project's complete with curb and gutter, gravel restoration is coming nice. The only item left to do is Pepin County Highway Department, the week of September 25th, will be placing the hot mixed asphalt for the project that pretty much complete the 12th Avenue East project, so. I believe we're holding a small retainerage from the contractor next level, so we'll process a final pay request and close out the project real soon here. The other project, Madison Street improvements, we continue to work on design drawings for that project, getting prepared for a public information meeting that's scheduled with the businesses, property owners, and the public on Monday, October 7th, 4:30 to 6:30.
Second, correct?
Second, yep.
Yep, October 2nd, sorry. 4:30 to 6:30. So that's a open house that allows people to come in between that timeframe. We'll have drawings like we have on, we have done on other projects, spread them out on the table and the wall, and meet with businesses and property owners regarding the project design and so forth. Last week, we spent a couple hours with Matt and some of the businesses that have the old coal bin, coal chutes that are underneath the sidewalk, so we're able to access those, take some pictures, just to understand a little bit better what we're dealing with as we propose as part of the design to abandon those coal chutes and rooms underneath the sidewalk. So we'll be getting together with our structural engineer to look at the foundations and so forth in terms of what we need to do as we fill those with sand and compact them.
Some of those still have, still have rooms under the sidewalk.
Yeah, one of them, one has a large room, the other ones are smaller accessways, so. And the one property owner with the large room, they were present. We needed to go down in the basement into that room to get pictures and talk about what's proposed and so forth, so. Well, we hope they'll show up at the public information meeting and give us some public feedback in terms of what's proposed, the coal bins under the sidewalk. This week, we spent a couple hours again with Matt, walking the project, specifically looking at a lot of the small detail issues, the crosswalks and sidewalks with reference to Americans with Disabilities Act standards for access for ADA people. Some of the areas that are, if you've driven the project, there's a lot of the corners that are real tight to the building and so forth, so we have a lot of design standards that we have to do. So it was a good meeting and walk-through with Matt and a couple of our design engineers, and we have some pretty good ideas on how to address some of those issues and so forth. So with a downtown street project like this, it's real critical. You know, obviously, you've got to match building opening, building stoops and so forth, and then also get your curb and gutter to drain and your sidewalk to slope out and drain from the building to the sidewalk, but also maintain handicap access along the sidewalk and not exceed slopes that you can't exceed per the ADA rules. So downtown projects are all a little challenging, so we're getting some of those items worked out early in the process, so. Things going well. We're still on schedule to advertise the project in December and then open bids sometime in January. Don't like to open bids in December. That's usually when a lot of contractors take time off after their busy construction season, so usually get better, better turnout waiting till after the New Year, so. That's the schedule and the update. It's everything I have.
Any questions for the city engineer? Next, move on to the public works utilities, August report. Superintendent Gillis?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Ross touched on all some of my stuff. Again, the open house on the 2nd from 4:30 to 6:30. We will have the new, for those of you who are on the public work committee, we have changed the design a little bit from, from what was on there, the avenues. We have to do some unique things on the avenue size to get to get those ADA compliant slopes. We're going to show those ideas at the, at the public informational meeting, and then we'll have that plan set for public works committee's approval on.
we'll have that plan set for Public Works Committee's approval on the 9th, so. If you do show up to that meeting, the plans will look a little bit different than what we talked about here about a month and a half ago, in order for us to meet those ADA codes. So we'll see what the public has to say about them, and then we'll bring them back to you with their input and your input to see, to make a final decision, so. Other than that, our new wastewater treatment plant permit comes in effect October 1st. Everything went through our public hearings, all our postings, comment periods, no issues, and October 1st, we fall under our new five-year WWTP permit. Not much changed in that, some extra testing parameters that we have to do annually, and just some levels around our chlorination, we haven't had change, so other than that, everything pretty much stayed the same. Unless you have any questions, that's all I got.
Any other questions for Public Works and Utilities?
Any updates on the chart?
Yes, we got our check from the insurance company, working on getting prices. Ford will not give 2024 prices till close to the end of the month, so basically, I'm just sitting still, kind of waiting for Ford to issue their 2024 pricing list, so. Not, not a lot's happening on that, on that front.
We'll certainly talk about that during the lunch.
Yeah, we'll talk, and they'll have all the prices and all the information during the budget process.
Again, any other, any other questions for Public Works Utilities? Hearing none, the council will convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985-1C for the purpose of considering employment promotion.